All right. It is seven o'clock. So we like to start on time here, so we, I think everybody's online and checked in. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone here this evening and also those of you later on watching on YouTube. And just a brief reminder, if you have cell phones or electronic devices, please turn them on airplane mode or on silent so they don't disrupt our meeting here. And with that, our first order of business, would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, I'll make a few announcements. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Pam Martenson, Mike Molliter, John Chumperland, Shannon Bruce, and on the end we have with WSB, our city engineer, Allison Fausky, and then we have our city clerk, Chris Lindquist. Our director of administration is Cassandra Tabor, and sitting right behind her is our public works superintendent, Gary Peters. And then to my right, we have our city administrator, Mike Broney. Brian Grimm is our finance director, and next to him, we have our community development director, David Abel, and then our city attorney with Kennedy and Graven is Ron Beatty, and on the end we have Paul Falls. So with that, that concludes all of the announcements. Approval of the agenda, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? If none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Martenson made the motion, and Ms. Bruce seconded. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So first order of business is special presentations, it's introduction of our new employee, Gary Nelson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As we mentioned last week, Gary Nelson wasn't able, or last meeting, Gary Nelson wasn't able to join us, but he's here this evening. He is our new building inspector, and as you recall, he started at the end of June with us. He came to us with just over 20 years of private sector experience and his transition into public sector. We are getting fantastic feedback, not only from his supervisor, which is Mr. David Abel, but also from the community and the builders that he's working with out in the field. So I'll give him a moment to come up and say hello.
Evening, Mayor Whalen and City Council. We'd just like to thank you for allowing me to come and work here in the city of Minnetrista. I'm very happy and excited to be here. Sorry I wasn't able to be here previously.
We understand, and that's just fine. We're glad you're here, and hopefully in part of the team, so we really appreciate that, well needed, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Next, we have River Valley Church recognition.
Yes, so I'll jump in with that as well, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So up on the overhead here, you'll see that River Valley put out a really great video showing the projects that they did and included us in, but unfortunately, our Citrix system does not like to run that. So I did a couple of screen grabs that shows their team working on the barn that's over on the other side of our PD, which, as Gary has let us know multiple times, has been a project that's been long needed, but Public Works just doesn't have the time and staff to get to it. And so River Valley came out and did that for us during their service project day. So Pastor Dave Olson is here joining us, and I've just asked him to come up and introduce himself and maybe talk a little bit about his service day and what brought him to the city for us.
Yeah, yeah. Mayor Whalen, City Council, thanks for having me tonight.
Welcome.
I'm Dave Olson, I'm the, today's my first day, I'm the campus pastor of the Minnetrista Campus River Valley Church, so I've previously served there as the youth pastor for the last four years, but I just recently got promoted to the campus pastor. So we had our serve day back in July, we had over 175 people in our church community go all in out. This was just one of five service projects that we did in Minnetrista, mound, and then we went to Minnesota Delanteen Challenge Lakeside Academy up in Buffalo and helped serve up there as well. But we were really happy to do that, and if there's ever a project that Public Works is like putting off, let us know, and we'd love to just utilize people and just be a blessing to the community.
We've got some roads you can build.
That is outside our expertise.
I don't know, with the team you brought out, they knocked that out fast, so that might be a good option for us.
Yeah, yep.
Well, we really appreciate that, and it's a wonderful service that you do, and your church is great as well.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a joy, we were very happy to do that.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, and look forward to more, more projects together, so, thank you.
Absolutely, we love it, we love Minnetrista.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
So now, nobody's signed up, under persons to be heard, so we're moving on to consent agenda items. It consists of A, approve our work session meeting minutes from August 5th, 2019, B, approve our regular meeting minutes from August 5th, 2019, C is a resolution to approve claims, and D is a resolution to approve election equipment lease with the West Hocke School District, Independent School District 277. Any questions on that? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and D?
Some moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead, John.
I'll second.
John, so motion was made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Chumperland to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So we move on to our public hearings. First, we have some on sale intoxicating liquor license for Cox Culinary Arts or Doing Business as Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Cox Culinary Arts, Doing Business as Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue located at 8175 State Highway 5. It's the Old Norseman or Timothy's location, if you're not, what did I say? Did I say Highway 5?
Highway 7.
Oh, I'm sorry, Highway 7. I moved.
You moved.
New location.
New location. Has applied for an on sale intoxicating liquor license. This would include intoxicating alcohol, wine, and strong beer. The application, applicants, I'm sorry, have completed and passed the background checks. They received their conditional use permit to operate a license back in October by Resolution They are currently open on Saturdays and operating under an internet food license from Hennepin County. They would like to open the restaurant and disturb alcohol starting August 31st. We're on a little bit of a crunch to accommodate that, but it might happen. Contingent upon the receipt of a copy of the buyer's card issued by the state of Minnesota. If they so choose, they can still open the restaurant on the 31st, they just won't be able to serve alcohol. They stated their hours of operation would be from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Wednesday through Friday, and 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturdays. They do have a printed menu that the patrons will be able to order from, and that has been included in your packet. There's currently no bar area in the restaurant, and the applicant is aware that if he would like to add a bar area, that would require a building permit review, and also Hennepin County Health would have to come out and inspect that. Buddy Boy has described their license premise as the restaurant and the attached patio, which is also in your packet. Intoxicating alcoholic beverages will not be allowed or consumed in the parking area of the property. The state does not require fencing around the patio area, nor does it, is it required in our city code. Staff has requested the applicant to post signage around the patio area stating that no alcohol beyond this point be placed around the patio. They will be added to the compliance checks that the public safety conducts every year, and their license will expire on May 31st, just as all the other liquor licenses do in the city of Minnetrista. Staff recommends approval of the on sale intoxicating liquor license for Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue with the conditions outlined in the staff report and contingent on receiving a copy of the buyer's card. And that's a little strange, because I have to send it in first, they approve it, and then the buyer's card gets issued, so then we'll issue.
That's why it's going to be tight in terms of time for the 31st.
Correct.
Hmm, yeah.
And then this application does require a public hearing, and notices have been sent to neighboring properties within 500 feet. It was published in the paper, and to date, the city has not received any public comment.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, then, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. If there's anybody here that wishes to speak for or against this item, you may do so. You'd have to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. All right, I don't think there's anybody here for that, so I'm going to close the public hearing and take it back to council. Is there any questions? Any issues?
I'd love to see more restaurants in Minnetrista.
Would be nice, yes. So I need a motion then to approve Resolution 94-19, which is approving an on sale intoxicating liquor license for Cox Culinary Arts Doing Business as Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue.
Some moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce, seconded by Mr. Molliter. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And next, it would be ordinance number 455. Oh, that's the next one, so that takes care of your item. So, thank you, looking forward to that. You're welcome. So next is ordinance number 455, which is the Jennings Bay Villas PUD, and this is a continuation, and it is a public hearing, from, it's continuation from 7:15.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I guess we made contact with the applicant last week, indicated they'd be here, but as you can see, he's not in the audience this evening, so I'll take the direction of council if you want me to proceed with presenting the items, or what your direction would be.
Well, we could do a couple of things. We could either move on to, well, the next, our road discussion, and then come back to this, maybe they're delayed, it's pretty early in the meeting.
I've heard nothing from the applicant, Madam Mayor.
Do you want to do road discussions and then bring it back, or do you just want to discuss it and move forward?
I'd prefer to discuss it and move forward.
All right, okay, then go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So your first item is ordinance number 455. As you recall, back when the preliminary plat was approved, we did it, do an ordinance which rezoned the property to a PUD and allowed for a 14-lot subdivision. Later in 20, that was in 2017, later in 2018, at a February 20 work session, the applicant did come to council seeking a revision of that preliminary plat. It went from 14 lots down to 13 lots, and he was given direction to go ahead and proceed to final plat as such. So what ordinance 455 does is update that PUD ordinance of rezoning and updates the exhibit from a 14-lot exhibit to a 13-lot exhibit. So that is the action before the council this evening. You should go ahead and continue the hearing that you've already opened, and go ahead and take comment. If anyone wants to speak, go ahead and close, and we'd be looking then for you to adopt ordinance number 455, and then we have a resolution as follow-up to that to authorize the publication of it by title and summary.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I have a question about the turn lane, and who's paying for the turn lane on 19? Where is that money coming from?
The developer.
Okay, okay.
Otherwise, I'll open the public hearing, we'll take comment if anybody's here for that.
There he is.
And then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll move on to questions and comments from the, from the council. So is there anybody here that wishes, this is a public hearing, anybody that wishes to speak for or have comments regarding Jennings Bay Villas? Okay? All right, hearing none, then, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. We have held it open for a while, so now it's closed. I'll take it back to council. Are there some comments or questions? I have a few, but I'll, I'll.
I'll make this all, thank you, ma'am.
Sure, Mr. Molliter?
When this was brought to us originally, I voiced my concerns about being too many lots here, and I still have those same concerns. Those have been actually reinforced with the adjacent PUD, given that we just had a council meeting last time talking about deck variances and setbacks. And it's kind of what happens with these things, is we end up, you know, the developer's quite aware of all the rules, obviously, with all the material here, but then the buyers buy them, and we all know what happens. And I'm just not comfortable with the density of this. Seven and a half foot setbacks are really tiny, and you might say, well, you don't put the deck on the side, I agree, but then you put a deck on the back, and pretty soon those decks are really close together. You know, the models here, all shown as walkouts, walkouts are inclined to have decks. I just think this is all really pretty tight, and I didn't support it then, and I still do not support it now.
Okay, I understand. Anybody else? So I have a few questions, particularly, again, kind of reiterating what Mr. Molliter was saying. We have had deck issues with smaller lots like this, and so maybe Mr. Abel or Mr. Beatty, you could weigh in. Can we require the developer to give a, to provide a disclosure regarding what size deck can be put on a house when, when a house or a model, particular model is determined by a buyer, and then they can say, okay, but here's the deck that you could put on? Because this is an issue, and I don't think the council or staff wants to be issuing variances after the fact.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, council, we did, you're right, it's an issue that we discussed at the last meeting and kind of struggled with how, how does staff insert itself in sort of a private transaction, trying to minimize the disruption to the developer, but also being sensitive to staff's time. And David and I have talked about that a couple of times. What we talked about today, and I think what you're kind of suggesting, is this might be an opportunity for us to talk about a mandatory disclosure requirement. We've done that in the past, not for this specific sort of thing, but there have been a couple of occasions when there's been something unusual about a subdivision that we thought it was important that people know about. It wasn't an attempt to scare them, but it was an attempt to inform them. And so what we've done in the past, and you might want to think about this time, we've put a provision in the development agreement that requires the developer to come up with disclosure language, relatively short disclosure language about whatever the subject is, submit that language to the city so that we can approve it, and then require that purchasers be given a copy of that, and generally sign that they have received that, and then allow the city at any time that it wishes to request evidence that people have gotten that. It's not a perfect solution, but I think it at least goes as far as I can think of to addressing the problem that you're talking about.
Okay. Would that be then part of the developer's agreement?
It would be, and it's not in there now. This is something that we just discussed today, so that if, if the council wishes to approve the project with that in the development agreement, there'd have to be a small modification.
Okay. The other issue that I have is, my recollection is that when we first looked at this PUD, there was an outlot planned, and there was like a fire pit and a gazebo, a little area for the neighborhood to gather. And that is now, I'm not seeing that on anything that we currently have in our packet. So is that something the developer could maybe address? Mr.?
If I could take a couple minutes and address their concerns about decks and hardcover and setbacks. Obviously, it's been quite a haul for me, a long road here. That said, that is exactly one of the major reasons why I have been a little bit prolonged to get to this point. I have, along with Ganya Holmes, the builder that would be building these villa homes, have matrixed every lot, specifically of what units, what homes can be built on those, and to make sure that they, A, meet the hardcover for each lot, number one. Number two, the setbacks, make sure that they meet the percentage of front footage that still allow us to get a three-car garage front-loaded. So I really, obviously, I endorse having some type of language put in the developer's agreement that creates, allows me or requires me to create some type of a simply read document that's passed to the consuming public, that would be buying these to specifically, that specifically outlines what they can and can't do post-closing for improvements to their property. I just think it's wise to do, and it's what's really taken me a long time, because there are a number of different, as you know, there are a number of different rules, and also staff, Nick Olson specifically, and I have spoken quite a bit about the variances that recently went through on the decks at the adjoining neighborhood. I have no interest in doing that, I have no interest in, in participating in any type of difficult situation with, with an owner that's built a house that is handcuffed, to not be able to do something that is obviously, that's somewhat acknowledged by having a glass door to nowhere. So I get that, and I support that. As it relates to the park improvements, we also have really identified, we have a number of people that have these on hold or are in some form of agreement to build or buy a home site here. But we also have had plenty of time to vet out who are these people that would most want, most often they want to, or most likely want to live in here, and we have focused our design towards that. When it first came with that plan of that park, the walking trail was not at the end, it was in the middle of some lots, I think two or three lots down, and it allowed for the, the walking trail allowed for, where it was existing, allowed for the lot at the end to have more, able to be wider, which tightened that up, and it also required us when we got into engineering to make the pond larger than we really had set forth to do. So there was a lot of moving parts on the outlot, the pond, the tree placements, and the sizes specifically of that last house, and the location of the trail. We also, most importantly, those houses that face that wooded pond area there, the dynamics of that buyer liked the fire pit, liked the seating and gathering area, but didn't like the infrastructure in their backyard, or adjacent to their backyard. So we eliminated that gazebo. We want, we plan on putting a fire pit back in there, we plan on putting in some Adirondack chair seating. We also look, are going to be looking at that pond to see what kind of water flow it has to it, if it has standing water that develops there, we might introduce the idea of coming back here, asking for a fountain to be put back in there. Some type of infrastructure that's really guided at nature, and some type of gathering area that's really not intrusive to the homeowners when there's not people there. So that's really why we did that. But I am, I've worked on this a lot to really create a nice neighborhood here, and I'm really hopeful that the city acknowledges or understands that I have specifically taken a lot of time to look at setbacks, hardcover. There's a couple house sites in here that I'm going to have to do some specific designing. First lot in on the left, last lot on the left side on the corner, and specifically the second lot on the right side. We have to get a little creative on lower level finishes in there, so that they're, they accommodate window wells correctly, and, you know, so.
So Mr. Martino, where would this fire pit and gathering spot be?
The fire pit's marked on the landscape plans that I've had. I don't see it on this one, but I can.
Yeah, if you would, please.
The walking trail comes down in here, kind of has a little circle in here.
Okay.
And right in this area was going to be a fire pit, you know, and then just going to Adirondack chair seating area overlooking that pond, and we're going to be doing that because we're concerned on just not putting any more pressure on the hardcover, just doing it with wood chips or, and casual seating.
Okay. And then I also see it says, "proposed blacktop trail," and then there's a line, and then it says, "future trail."
Yes.
Are you going to be grading that, but not blacktopping it?
We're going to grade the whole site. We're actually going to be coming up through this area, and instead of turning and going this way and coming up like we originally thought with the infrastructure, we're coming in this way, going up this way. And so this whole area is getting graded, blacktop down to here. And we did that for a specific reason, to introduce this trail to this homeowner group, but not to have people walk all the way down here to nowhere and then turn around and come back.
So the fire pit will be the destination as the interim?
Exactly. You'll be on Half Moon, park your bikes, go out to the fire pit, hang out in the Adirondack chair, have a glass of wine, look at the fountain.
Do you have somebody interested in that last house?
Yes.
And so they know that this will be in their backyard pretty much?
Yes.
Okay.
Specifically, that's the conversation we had about the gazebo. But there's just too much going. You start putting a lot of infrastructure back in there, it's, it becomes not what it was designed to do, and that's just to be a gathering, gathering area for the neighborhood to just kind of hang out, and, you know, it's not to put a lot of infrastructure, create more hardcover.
So, oh, go ahead, Mr. Chumperland.
Back to the deck question.
Mm-hmm.
I think most of your models, or maybe all your models, have an optional deck in the floor plans.
Mm-hmm.
And I can't tell by looking at the layout, those optional dimensions all fit within the 25-foot setback?
Yes, they do. They do with a couple caveats. If I can approach that again, I'll show you, point out a couple things. These all illustrate either decks or screened porches.
The little bump outs.
The little bump outs.
Yeah.
Okay? In this area here, we, if we, if they decide they're going to do something here, we have to use a deck that meets the requirement of the city, or redesign the back of this house. The deck that, when I say the deck that meets the requirement of the city, you know, the spacing, the slats, we've talked about that, what would be, what would cause impact of creating hardcover or a setback problem. In this area here.
But would setback be an issue on that lot? That would be lot seven?
No, because what we would do on this one, this house here, we would introduce a deck inside with a square. We have a, an open deck, private rooftop, screened-in porch off the corner here.
Okay.
On this one over here, we are at grade here, so we would redesign so that we take it, there's a fireplace that's in this grade row, we'd move that, that fireplace to this wall, we'd put a glass door here and a small deck there. Same on this one, move the fireplace from this wall to that wall, put a small deck on or porch there, and depending on what kind of hardcover we're working with with each one of those lots. So there are three lots specifically, four lots specifically, but really three. We're, we're watching this, we're specifically designing special units for those home sites there to comply with window wells. We talked about doing modular window wells, and it didn't really go very far with the WSB, so we're, we're going to put the window wells are redesigned so that they're outside the setback areas or in the back of the properties, or they get to an area that doesn't allow us to have, or still allows us to do the normal type of window wells that we have been talking about.
Okay. Any other questions?
So are we talking about all the design aspects right now?
So are we talking about all the design aspects right now because we have a couple-
Sure, I mean, yeah, yeah, ask whatever.
Is the turn lane going in now or is that in the future?
The one, yes, the turn lane's going in now.
Which, which one?
The left hand.
Left, yes.
Well, from which direction, please?
From the, from the south.
From the south, yes.
Coming from the south.
You can make a left-hand turn.
As you're, as you're heading north or as you're-
Yes.
Yes.
As you're heading north, you can make a left turn?
Yes.
Okay. So that's just the opposite then of what we've done at Red Oak?
Correct.
So there'll be no right turn lane as you're heading north?
There is.
It's south, I'm sorry.
No. There'll be a shoulder.
There's a large shoulder.
So it's kind of the flip-flop of what we've got at Red Oak?
Yep.
Was there, I mean, I'm assuming you worked with the county on this?
Yes.
So what was the county's rationale?
Liked it.
Okay, okay.
But I think- We met there, we had a site visit with staff and the county.
So they have different requirements, I'm assuming, based on traffic counts or anticipated traffic counts?
Correct. I mean, the idea was that that actual right turn lane that you're talking about wouldn't be warranted given the number of units. It'd likely be more warranted sometime in the future if the properties to the south were to ever develop. So that was the discussion with the county and why they were satisfied with, you know, they're meeting the requirements that the county's asking for.
So then, but if, is there dedicated right-of-way?
Yes.
Enough dedicated right-of-way to add that?
Yes.
So that would then be required or requested of the next developer then?
The turn lane?
The, the other turn lane?
Yes, correct. And the land is being dedicated now as part of the plat.
Okay.
As well as water main, you know, water mains being extended to the extent of the plat.
Yeah.
But yes, that, you know, at which time if the other properties were developed, that would be a requirement of them. Or depending upon, I mean, it all depends upon how many of those properties develop, where it's coming out.
Right.
All of those factors that are unknown.
Right. But the dedicated right-of-way is there for expansion in the future, so, yeah.
And that includes a shoulder? Because there's basically no shoulder on that road right now.
Right, right.
Other questions?
I'd like to say I think it's important that we do have a disclosure about the decks because these are tight lots.
I'm sorry.
I agree. I think having a disclosure about the deck, you know, size and so forth should be included in the information for the buyer.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the, hey, we went through this once already. And if we can avoid the situation we had a couple of weeks ago, that would be great.
Yeah. And I never, you know, we, you know, without belaboring this, I just, I am, at one point through this whole process here, I had originally come in here with a builder in mind that I do a lot of work for. And at one point, they decided that maybe this project was too small for them and too much micro-management necessity. So I went a different direction and worked with a custom home builder. And then through that process, I was approached by Ganya Holmes again and said, "We think we made a mistake on that. We could do a really, really nice job." So they approached me on it. But by that time, I had done so much work for, I head up the project in the woods of Halsted's Bay for Ganya Holmes. I head up the project in the code for what Ganya Holmes does. I'm doing three other projects for them right now in Excelsior and Minnetoka Country Club. And I've gotten very close with the gentleman that runs the land management, land development for Ganya Holmes, Rick Packer. I think he's second to none in this western suburbs, but that's my personal feelings. But Rick and I really kind of came together on this and, and I felt that that's why we slowed down. And I called city staff and said, "I'm pumping the brakes on this because I want this to be right. I don't want to revisit things after I start this development. I want to make sure that I have looked at everything that could possibly go wrong down the road. I want to make sure that if I show four houses, I know which four houses fit on, and which lots they fit on." There's a Palmer that is our kind of mothership here and it only fits on five lots in this neighborhood, but it's five of the best lots. So it's the one that's really getting some, a number of people want to build. We've reworked this last house in here on this one to allow for a tandem three-car garage, a special called Maxwell. So we have looked, I am, I have looked at everything here and that doesn't mean that I missed something, but at the end of the day, having your protections in there are fine with me because I don't think I missed anything. And I don't think Rick has missed anything, but ultimately at the end of the day, having this, having a, and starting and having a good working relationship and ending up with a nice neighborhood in Minatrista is, that's what I'm here for.
So I just want to kind of clarify a couple more things. I know you talked early on and you're showing it in your plan up here about, you know, replanting a lot of the trees because you were saying you had, because of the grading, so on, that we're going to lose a lot of trees in there. And I think that's going to be a real important issue.
Very.
So just want to make sure that that is actually done. The other thing that we've, I don't know how this works, you're the developer, not me, but, you know, so you have Ganya Homes coming in, they're doing all 13 homes.
Yes.
I'm assuming. So what happens, like, let's say Ganya does five homes and then says, "Ah, we don't want to do this" or "we're out of here." Or what if you say, "Well, I want to sell?" So the reason I'm asking these kind of questions is because with the immediate neighborhood next to you, they've gone through, what, three different builders, developers? And it's a huge issue. It's a problem. They get new people in left and right all the time and, and the follow-through is, is difficult. And it's hard for staff to keep on top of it and track everything. And this is a small, much smaller development, but what kind of assurances do we have that that's not going to be a problem with this development?
Well, I pray every night that doesn't happen.
We do too.
Personally. And it is one of the reasons why I'm so excited that Ganya Holmes came back and put this back onto their, their platform. Because using a smaller custom home builder, that is a classic issue that can happen. And I actually had to do that in my neighborhood in Kentire that, in Orno. I started, I developed it with one builder and then I ended up finishing it, the last six out of seven with Ganya Holmes. Ultimately, at the end of the day, I've had a long-term relationship with Ganya Holmes. They are, they've got, they've made quite a statement in Minatrista and are, and really like the working relationship and like the, the community that they're working in. And I've proven that there's a lot of, there's a lot of runway in Woodland Cove. It's become a destination neighborhood as far as I'm concerned. I had two sales in there over the weekend with Ganya Holmes. And ultimately, at the end of the day, the best thing I can do to answer the question that you have is to use the quality people that have the long track record and that, and Ganya Holmes does. They, they've been in the business a while. They've gone through the downturn of the marketplace. So I'm excited. Could, could I get a call six months from now? Well, I hope not. Could it happen? Yes, it could. What's, what's my, my, one of my safeguards there? It's why I asked for four permits at, in the developer's agreement at Mass Grading. Because we're coming in there and we're going to make a statement. We're going to put up some model homes and try to direct the market to finish that neighborhood instead of just, you know, letting it drip feed us into a different economy. So at the end of the day, I'm doing everything I possibly can. I don't think it's going to happen. And I think you've got the right, I have the right partner here. So I'm excited about it really, to tell you the truth.
All right. Thank you.
Question on this here. I thought the trail was going to lead out to the adjacent lot, but it looks like the trail is dumping out into the backyard of someone at Red Oak. Because it comes down here and at the very lower-left corner, rather than immediately coming to the south, it goes to the west.
It does on this one. Page, look at page 62 in your packet.
Yeah, I'm looking at page 79.
Yeah. And then it turns. So then page 62, it turns.
Well, page 79, it doesn't.
Okay.
And so that's what I'm concerned about.
Sure, which one is correct then, yeah?
I see what you're talking about. Does it come down here and-
I mean, you got, it's right up here, you can see.
Kind of comes down here like this?
But that's what I was expecting, but you're not. You're going up and then left, right?
When I get to this point within this guideline, I've masqueraded in whatever, I don't see that getting improved until, until and if the property to the south-
Well, that's what we're talking about, the plan here. And it's very important to get this right now because it's going to be a problem. Just following your tree line, I can see the trail implicitly on this and it's explicit on page 79 where, and it's actually on page 63, and you're also saying, see, 62 doesn't match. 62 shows what I would think.
That's what we had, yeah.
Right, but you look, go down to 63 and you can see how it, it looks like it's-
It turns there too.
Well, but then you look at page 79 and it doesn't. It looks like it goes out to the back of Red Oak. And so I'm a little confused there. What, because it's patuminous, I assume why it's dark blue because it matches the driveways. But what, maybe David, maybe you can speak to that?
Well, I think you might be, I mean, why it turns up and goes to Red Oak, that's where the sewer's coming from. So there might not necessarily be trail in front of it, but there are several plans. I've got the PowerPoint up, some of the plans that I'm looking at with Brian here.
Oh, so that's the sewer.
But that's the sewer line?
Okay.
That's where the utilities coming from?
It's just color-coded the same as the driveway, so it implies hardcover. But, so it does turn to the lot to the south?
Yes.
Okay.
The trail does?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So, I mean, that's the other concern I have about this one.
And, I mean, there was, but I think the plan, I mean, if you recall, that neighbor to the south wanted, until, he wanted those trees planted there. He wanted the buffer.
Right.
So you, there's, so in terms of going all the way to the south, I mean, it'll go as far as the trees.
Okay.
If you recall that, that has been brought up during the public hearing in the preliminary plot. He was okay with the, having the future trail there, but until which time he wanted to develop, he said, "Go ahead and plant your buffers in between me and we're good."
That, that's kind of the whole plan here is you're, you're implicitly imposing these restrictions now on the future development of the next site, whether it's owned by the current owner or another owner. You're saying, "Hey, your street's going to come in and match up to this one. Hey, your trail's going to come in and match up to this one." And I'm a little bit uncomfortable imposing those requirements on someone who doesn't even, may not even be the person that's currently owning the land. So I guess I have some concerns with that as well.
Well, you could, I mean, you could feasibly have that be a cul-de-sac forever if you wanted it to, if it didn't work within development to the, to the south.
Yeah.
I think it's just planning for connecting them because that makes good city planning, connecting roads. If, if possible. Okay. So on 79, where it shows it going up, that's the sewer line. So the sewer is going to be right underneath the trail?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
I just have one other quick question. For the one road that goes around there, we're talking about having future developers add the extra layer of asphalt as it's being built. It's probably too late for this development, right?
I would, I would think yes. But we adopted that standard after, you know, we granted preliminary plat approval and given engineering standards.
Okay. I just need a moment to-
Okay.
I also have just one thing to point out on the conservation easement, and this is just a word that I think needs to be replaced on page 121. 4C, where it's talking about the trees, if they cause any trees to be removed, they need, they're liable to pay the current rate for tree. I think they meant to say replacement and not removal there. 4C, third line in that paragraph, where it says removal.
They would be paying, they would be paying for the tree removal?
Well, it's the removal rate. I mean, I guess, remove or replacement, I guess it's kind of the same thing. We can put replacement there, that's fine.
I was just reading that, it didn't make sense because removal means taking trees out, replacement means putting trees.
If they take trees out, they have to, if they remove trees, they have to pay the replacement rate.
Well, that's not, the way, the way I'm reading this, it says, "It causes any trees or which are additionally removed, they shall be liable to pay the rate to remove them." I don't think it's talking about replacing here, is it?
No, well, right, because this is, this would be in the easement. I mean, this would be, they'd get double fined. You know, this would be unplanned removal.
Right. So, but I think what, if I'm understanding this correctly, it's saying, "You're going to pay whatever it takes to get the tree out," whatever that cost is.
Yep.
I don't think it says anything about what you're going to pay to put a new one in this place.
Right, well, they'd have to play the replacement, they'd have to pay into the fund. So this is, this is, would be during development, and hopefully it doesn't happen, if there's unplanned removal that they haven't called out on the removal plan, they, they have to pay its double the rate. So it's unplanned removal that comes out of there. And then it's a two-to-one ratio as per what the ordinance is.
I guess it's just not worded very clearly and it's, when you read it, it's difficult to understand what it's saying. But if, if it says what-
They shall be liable to pay the city's tree replacement fund or replacement fee to the environmental enhancement fund? If you can clean that up, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll clean, we'll clean that up.
If you're doing cleanup, then also clean up page 135, exhibit G. There is no such thing that I'm aware of in the city of Lake Minatrista.
Which, I'm sorry, you said which?
Page 135, first paragraph. Yeah, it says, "This instrument is made by Jennings Bay Villa and Minnesota Corporation in favor of the city of Lake Minatrista."
I saw that too before, yeah. All right. All right. Any other comments? So you want to motion?
Yes. As you noted, Madam Mayor and Council, I guess the item that we started discussing was the ordinance. So I guess if we could start with, with that. There's an ordinance 455 on the table along with the resolution by title and summary. So if we could start there, please, Madam Mayor.
So the, we have to approve the number 455 Jennings Bay Villa PUD and then also title and summary. So, okay. So do I have a motion then to approve ordinance number 455 Jennings Bay Villas PUD?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Chumperlin and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
A motion passes 4-1 with mulliter descending. And then we need a motion to authorize publication of ordinance number 455 by title and summary. Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Ms. Bruce. All those, any further questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1, mulliter descending. And then the Jennings Bay Villas final plat. So we are looking to approve the resolution number 96-19, which is approve the final plat for Jennings Bay Villas. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. And then do we need to indicate all of the discussion items and changes? This is just the final plat?
This is just the final plat.
So then we'll go to the-
What we talked about would be next.
In the dis, okay. All right. Any other questions?
Um, yes, before we go on, on page 125, exhibit A to the conservation easement agreement, it lists, it says Lake Minnetoka instead of-
We just talked about-
No, this is different. This is 125. Again, I think it was the same editing error. No, this is different, this is one-twenty-five, again, I think it was the same editing error. One-twenty-five, it says Lot C, Fairview Park, Lake Minnetaka, Hennepin County.
I think that's probably, that's the legal description.
Oh, it is, it is, okay. Then, okay.
Okay?
If I may, really quick, Madam Mayor and Counsel, the subdivision agreement is ninety-nine percent complete, there are some drafting and things that need to be completed, and, for the purposes of getting it to, to the council, that, we, we know there's some tweaks that need to be made, and Andrew helped draft this, and we talked about that as it went in, so it will be looked through before it is finalized, signed, and recorded with Hennepin County.
Yeah, and then, you'll add those items, the disclosure items, and some of the other things that we talked about, then, would the, so, the fire pit and all of that, that's part of the final plat?
Yeah, it's included in the plan, you mean, what do you mean, yeah, I mean, the plans, the plans that you're reviewing, proving correct, yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's included. Yeah, okay. All right. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, then, is there a motion to approve the subdivision agreement with those changes that we discussed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor? You never called, you didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, removed, okay, so, motion to approve the final plat has been made and seconded, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four-one, and then approve the subdivision agreement as, with those changes as we discussed. Any questions? Comments, otherwise, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce, and seconded by Ms. Mortenson, any further questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four-one, Mulitor descending, and then approve the request for the waiver from certain architectural requirements.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Counsel, as the applicant indicated, there, there was some uniqueness to the number of the lots, as he was describing, and we certainly can invite him up to get in more detail, but I'll, I'll quickly go over what their request that's being made, in order to offer for three car garages on, on models on, on certain lots. This is from section five-oh-five-oh-seven, subdivision twelve-D-three of city code. He's requesting that the city council allow for a waiver of garages to compromise up to sixty percent of the ground, floor, street-facing linear, linear building footage on certain lots. The lots in questions would be Lot Three, Four, and Seven of Block One, and then Lots Two and Three of Block Two. I've got some elevations here that I just grabbed from the packet, just as a reference point, but that is the request that's being made by, by the applicant on those lots, and the, the waiver that's before council for consideration this evening, and like I said, if, if there's questions for the applicant, it might be more appropriate to the staff.
Okay. Questions of the applicant? Okay, are these the actual homes that Ganya home, Ganya builds?
Yes.
Okay, and are, are these the actual ones that you're gonna be marketing?
Yes.
Okay.
Specifically, our, the upper-left Palmer.
Okay.
Is, with the two other variations of it, our, our mothership.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Question of staff, what's the logic behind the fifty-five forty-five? Is it explainable?
Nope. It, well, I mean, it was, it was a consideration of council, and I think where it came in, in was Hunter's Crest, is, is when, as far back as I can track, the ordinance. I mean, the, the original, I mean, I, I know the intent, I mean, where the numbers specifically came from, I don't know, but, I mean, obviously, the intent was not to have your typical, just, see, a facade full of just a garage, as you drove through subdivision and, and neighborhoods, and, so they, they came up with a rationale to try to regulate that, and, and break up the, the architecture, if you will, so, I, you know, the specific number, I don't, I don't know, but that was, I mean, the intent all along, was to, to break it up.
Okay, thanks.
Which gets difficult, you know, when you're talking about densities like this, and something, obviously, in the future, we'd have to visit eventually, if, if you're gonna continue to have neighborhoods like this of this, this density. Woodland Cove's a little unique, where they, they came up with their own architectural guidelines as part of the master development agreement, you know, so they came up with models and variations, they're, they're certainly not following that fifty-five percent, but they had to get creative architecturally in different ways, with porches and windows, and different things like that, to, to try to come to some sort of agreeable measure, but, you know, it's be impossible in Woodland Cove to meet that requirement.
Good question, all right. Any other questions?
So, this is the one thing, I think, about this development actually makes sense, is to allow more garage space. But you can see, I just want to point out to the council, when this originally was proposed to us, it was just kind of a patio home concept that was gonna be appealing to empty nesters. As you can see, simply by looking at these houses, that model has changed dramatically, these are going to be single-family homes, you know, this is not a retirement community anymore, so, just be cognizant of what you just approved, because it's not the single-level patio home that was originally opted, but, in terms of the sixty percent garage space, I guess that's the one thing that makes sense.
Even empty nesters have a lot of toys these days.
Well, I don't, like I said, that part makes sense, it's just, okay, these are all, you can see, there's gonna be stairs going up there, and it's not, the walkouts, these are not empty nester homes, so just, that whole was, that was what was sold to us the first time, that's not true anymore.
The house on the right is really, this is part of the page for that collection of homes, it's not, it, it's not really what we're featuring.
But they're all walkouts, and they all have stairs, you know, so, you know, it's, the Palmer is, is the one you pointed out, it's, it's gonna be the same case, so. The demographic has changed.
Okay, any other questions? So, do we want to approve the request for the waiver from the certain architectural requirements?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five-oh. So with that, that concludes business items regarding Jennings Bay Villas, and we'll move on to our roads discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, I felt we had a really good discussion at the last council meeting, and, before you this evening, is some follow-up, from some of the questions that I heard from the council at the last meeting. The packet included, the road information packet remains the same, as I indicated in the report, I'm certainly happy to go and update that based on comments I received, both at the last council meeting and this council meeting. The first item that is provided for clarification is to look at options for the 2020 projects, based on versions one and two of the budget presented. So I've tabulated that, based on the recommendation for the reclamation of Shady Lane, Lakeview Drive, and Margaret Circle, and then indicated what funds would then be left available for an overlay, and handed out to you this evening is, I believe, a prioritized list of overlay candidates that, that's been provided by Superintendent Peters, as far as overlay candidates for your perusal. So certainly, we're not looking at specific items, or specific streets to include in an overlay, but certainly, this is something that we would look to come to, to the council, if given direction, as far as support for the reclamation project presented, and then, if there's any indication of, you know, one street over, another for the, for the overlay component. Another item included for follow-up was utilizing, the potential of utilizing a utility fund to pay for the street work. So I talked to Finance Director Grimm about this, and I believe he in turn talked to Ellers about that, and there's an indication that, yes, utility funds can be used for that, but it would be for the portion of the street that would be disturbed for that utility improvement. So we had a, we had a discussion, and I put it in the council memo, memo for your, for your consideration, that perhaps the council may want to look at what lifespan that street is currently in, so, for example, if it's a brand-new street, and there's something went awry with the utility, then certainly, the utility fund would pay for a hundred percent of that street replacement, because it's, it's a relatively new street. That being said, if, if the street is at approximately half its life, would the council entertain paying for, you know, kind of prorating the, that street repair cost from the utility fund? Just, just something to put out there for consideration in, in funding mechanisms. Long story short, is yes, utility funds can be used for a portion of the street project cost. And if the council is, would like to see what that cost would be for the recommended project, we can certainly go ahead and start pulling some numbers together from a high-level budget standpoint, so that we can start putting those numbers into the, the utility funds, the appropriate utility fund.
Don't you already have that here?
Um, that was just an example.
No, 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 on page three. You've got, you've got numbers here for Lift Station Seven, open cut one-forty, directional drill of one-eighty-eight, and budget of two-hundred.
Correct, and that, the, the open cut method was the, the replacement cost.
For just the sewer line?
That was just for the sewer line.
Right.
Correct.
So, we already have the number here.
We don't have the number for the street, how much percentage? She's just saying seventy-five thousand would be saved if we do it at the same time.
Well, but I mean, you've got the numbers here, it's open cut one-hundred-and-forty, you've got the overall cost of the street was, what, six, eight-ninety-three? These are right there. What am I missing?
Okay, I, I look, I'm thinking the one-forty is separate from the street.
Right, I know.
Okay, I don't, I'm not following, I'm sorry.
I, I don't know when she says she's gotta do the numbers for this, they appear to be right here. The, the sewer replacement cost is one-hundred-and-forty, the overall, the road project itself is eight-ninety-three, so we know the cost to age.
Oh, yeah, but we were saying, part of the cost of the road, road should be borne by the sewer.
Yeah, I, I get it.
Okay, and that's what she's saying is not.
So part of the eight-ninety-three would go to the one-forty, would it be a cost?
No, 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 it would go.
No, the cost of the road, to do the road is eight-ninety-three.
Right.
The cost to do the sewer is one-forty, right, okay, so what we're saying is part of that eight-ninety-three could be paid for by the sewer fund.
Right.
So I'm not sure what other math we have to do.
But what part?
Well, that's up to us.
No, I think it's based on the age of the road.
That's what she said, that's one way of doing it, you don't have to do it that way. Keyword may, keyword example.
Certainly, I, reading this, I, I understand where you're coming from, Councilmember Mulitor, and I, I think that if the council is interested in pursuing, looking at paying for a portion of the street cost with, for the, for the reclamation project, we would look at what percentage of the street would be disturbed by the open cut method, and that might be an easier way to take a look at the funding and the, the financial impact to that.
So you're saying, of the linear feet, how many of, of that would be for the sewer?
Correct, correct.
Right.
And based on the depth, too, because you'll have, at a certain depth, you need to cut out, and so, so.
It might be twelve feet versus five, or whatever.
So we can certainly take a look at that, but I did want to provide council with some direction, pardon me, with, with an answer to that question, 'cause I thought it was a good one, and we can certainly take a deeper dive, if that's something the council would like to take a look at. Another question that came up at the last council meeting was taking a look at the schedule for the proposed street improvements. One component, there was a lot of discussion with the hardscrabble area, and with respect to the nature conservancy parcels, what could and could not be done. I did make contact with somebody from the nature conservancy, we've exchanged voicemails and haven't been able to connect in order to meet on-site, but we both have agreed that that would be a, a good starting point, so, given, given the timeline, when we look at what we'd like to accomplish for getting a project out for bids, without knowing what the nature, nature conservancy would find acceptable and not acceptable at this time, I'm concerned with hardscrabble proceeding for a 2020 project, until we know what their concerns would be with the proposed improvements. Along the same lines, I've presented a proposed project schedule for local street improvement projects, specifically talking about having an open house with the residents prior to moving through feasibility study, and we talked a little bit about that at the last council meeting, but I think that's something we can certainly work through with the residents, as far as, you know, a, a lot of them look at, well, what is the cost to me? And we certainly wouldn't have a detailed analysis at that time, but we can certainly talk to them about what the, what the budget is for the project, and what the assessment policy is, and.
Would we have any estimates, or, 'cause that's what they're gonna wanna know.
Well, we have, we have the budgeting estimate at this time, and in order to get a feasibility level estimate, we would have to proceed with a feasibility study, so it would garner a lot, a lot more work and a lot more time, so, that's why I presented the schedule, that's included in the packet, is to get that open house with the residents and find out what the feedback is, and then, move forward with the feasibility study at that time, and then we would certainly build in another open house with the residents, prior to, you know, based on what the council feedback is, but we'll, we'll certainly have another open house with the residents before proceeding with a project. And then, last, with regards to municipal state aid projects, we would have a similar project schedule to that of a local street improvement, but we would need to factor in approximately one month, in order to get the plan submitted to state aid for review and approval, so that we can get some, some comments back from them and incorporate it into the plan, so. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has, or get any direction that, from the council, as far as proceeding with the 2020 project planning.
So we're looking at potentially two things, MSA Road, maybe, and I know we talked about Mill and Overlay on Halsted, and then pass, and, and possibly, now, we're looking at Lakeview, Shady, and Margaret.
Correct.
So it sounds like.
Don't forget the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the Mill and Overlay.
For which one, I'm sorry, what, what page are you on?
We talked about Shady, the very first thing on the background discussions, is not only Shady Lane, Lot Lake, Overlay, and Margaret Circle, but also Mill and Overlay of one-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, that's separate from Halsted.
Oh, that's that one, yes, yep. Okay, and they're saying, these are candidates by priority?
Correct.
This list that we got tonight?
Correct.
Yeah.
I guess, question for clarification, these probably would have a little more, I mean, obviously, you want to decide soon, but as Mill and Overlay, these would have a little more time to plug in, based on that budget amount, that, I think we talked about adopting a budget, a preliminary budget at that September third meeting, where, at least from my interpretation of this memo, for the reclamation project, you'd wanna get information, and probably get an open house set for September, which probably you'd wanna do tonight, based on timeframe, right, or?
Correct, thank you for the, for the clarification, so, yes, so the Mill and Overlay components, we do have a little bit more time, of, of a timeframe buffer, so to speak, in that, because those costs aren't assessed, we wouldn't go to that open house format for those residents prior to getting authorization for a feasibility report, so that does allow some additional time and discussion for an overlay candidate for 2020, prior to authorizing engineering services for feasibility report.
So you're saying, don't do the feasibility report and do an open house first, because if the residents don't want the project, we don't do it?
That was my understanding, we're certain, I can certainly adjust the, the schedule based on that, but based on a previous discussion, my takeaway was to reach out to the residents, indicating that there's a potential project in, in their area for next year, and a portion of that project cost would be assessed, and determine if that's palatable to them, prior to council authorizing expenditure of city funds in. in preparation of the feasibility report and preliminary design.
So if they say no, we're kind of right back to square one?
Well, no, 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 that's why we had the last discussion, the last discussion was if they say no, we have the check, the home Jennings Cove project was another viable alternative, which I think is still in our packet as another option. And I think that was the whole point, is, you know, we'll have this conversation with the residents in September, and if it's an adamant, no, absolutely not, that still gives us time to pivot and go with Jennings Cove project, so that we're not, that's the whole point, so that we're not stuck doing nothing.
And I think.
We're still having one street drop off, like we had this year.
Well, but we do have to do the sewer project on Lakeview, so that's kind of a given.
Well, okay, then it kind of defeats the whole purpose, so, but you wanted to have this open house, so we're having it.
I don't see anything wrong with having the open house, even, you know, this sewer project's kind of driving the bus on this one, but I think that's still fine to have the open house, because I think.
Well, it's not, it's not necessarily, because I mean, that's part of the reason why Allison has listed here the different costs for the sewer project, because the sewer project could be done with directional boring, and you wouldn't have to do the street.
Yeah.
And that's an option, it's more expensive, but I think that's why we're kind of going down this path.
Absolutely.
So I don't see as a foregone conclusion that we're going to do that.
Okay, so we want to move forward then, so we're considering the Lakeview, Margaret Circle, Shady Lane project area, notify the residents that these, this is what we're considering, we won't have dollar amounts other than.
You might be able to get a ballpark.
A ballpark, yeah.
You have to watch it in the number of households.
I guess the number you base it on, I mean, we have the 893,000, I mean.
And a little less, because the sewer fund will pick up some of that.
Yeah.
But you start with that.
Yeah, as a resident, I'd like to know, so there's that much, and 50% assessed, 446, and there's 35 parcels out there, you can get a pretty good indication.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
Right.
But I think we need to be really careful when we start talking about projected costs, because people hear a number and they latch on to that number and they don't forget.
Right.
So I think we need, we can talk in ranges of things, but I want to stay away from any kind of, it might be about
Right.
so much, we can't say things like that.
Well, if you do, you have to give them the caveats.
Even if, even if you give them caveats, they're going to remember that number, and I think we have to be really careful about a number.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, we do have to be careful with that, but I think, you know, you've got to have something, you can't just go with nothing.
Granted.
And I think, you know, we come in with what we think is a pretty high number, if it goes down, I think, you know, I'd be more inclined to put a number out there that might be a little high and have people relieved that it's a little bit lower, rather than obviously the opposites, we don't want to be in that situation. I don't want to, you know, put somewhere unrealistic thing out there, but we do have an obligation to say.
Right.
But yes, I mean, if we want to do it in the ranges, that's fine, absolutely, I don't want people to go, that's 85, 34, that's the number, you know, we got to be careful with that.
Well, that, the estimates that we have in our packet are estimates at this point, so. And it's public information, so that's probably somewhat of an indication as to maybe some range that it's going to be in.
Right.
Okay, all right. So, and then do we talk about, what, MSA?
Well, we mentioned the Halsted.
I know, we talked about doing the Mill and Overlay on Halsted, and that would then complete Halsted. Would be kind of nice to get that all done.
I think that makes sense.
And I think you said, I don't have the number right in front of me, I thought you said it was like around 250? And we get 265, okay, and we do get 251 or whatever it is for annual payment, so we should next year be able to cover that with that and still have 1.5 in the bank.
And 1.5 is the MSA, right, is the.
Kind of limit, threshold, right.
So that's an excellent segue, Madam Mayor, is Finance Director Grimm and I have had discussions about what our maximum, our maximum limits, or in the bank, so to speak, of state aid, and what the repercussions are if we exceed that. So certainly we could look at a Mill and Overlay candidate for next year, we can also take a look at, we currently have a state aid project that's open, we can certainly look to get some additional, request additional state aid funds for that project.
You're talking about the Sunny Field?
Um, for the Halsted project, correct. My understanding is that the city did not maximize their state aid portion from that project, so there's certain project costs that would still be eligible for state aid funding.
Do you know how much those costs are?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
I don't know why.
I don't know.
This is the first I've heard of that.
Yeah, I haven't heard of that either.
I can certainly get some more clarification on that, but we can certainly, we have some options to take a look at, so that the city would not find itself in a situation in having excess state aid funds going unused and having a penalty associated with that. So we certainly, you know, we've talked about the Mill and Overlay option, I can look deeper into Halsted if that's something that the council would like to take a look at.
Well, can I clarify though, I think the reason we didn't maximize, because some of these change orders have added to the project, so if.
Oh, sure.
So there's more eligible costs if you have work order changers that go up. We put 1.3 million, which is, you know, basically 1.5 is, is as much as, you know, we almost have towards the Halsted project, so we put a big chunk of money to the Halsted project, so.
I think we used almost all of the MSA funds that we had at the time.
In the bank, but it was 1.3 we used towards Halsted.
Okay. Okay, so you'll come back with that then next?
So you're looking for follow-up on the Halsted, the current Halsted state aid project additional funds?
No, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about doing the Mill and Overlay and Halsted, the remainder.
Yeah.
We've got our answer on the additional.
Okay.
So when you have to do, is it just, are you going to have to sortify the number, because we've got 265 in front of us? I just want to get an understanding of what's outstanding you need to address there.
We were just looking for direction, I was just looking for a direction on what the council would like to look at for a state aid project next year, so that's, you provided me that direction.
Okay, we're in agreement? Yes, I see five heads nodding, yes, okay. Do you need a motion or anything? Just direction?
I guess the only other question I would have, or maybe I'm out of turn, is, are we looking to set anything for that open house for early to mid-September, or are we going to wait till the next meeting to look at that, or?
Yes, we can look at Allison, see when you're ready.
Well, we'd certainly need some, some front-end time for that. We want to give some folks adequate notice, but at this time, I don't know if, if it would be useful at this point to set that date, or if we want to wait till that September 3 meeting would then put us in a tighter timeframe.
I thought we had talked about, at least at a staff level, trying to have an open house sometime between that September 3, obviously not, right?
Between the September 3 and 19?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it the 19th, or 17th, whatever that is?
I think the last time we held, we held an open house, if I recall correctly, it was before a council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
The same day.
The same day, would that, maybe that would be a good idea, and we wouldn't have a work session then?
Right, well, your only dilemma is if you don't pass a preliminary budget levy on the 3rd, and you want to talk more about it in a work session on the 16th, you're giving away that.
Well.
You'll be talking about it in the council meeting.
Then I think we would just talk about it at the council meeting, yeah.
That's just.
I think.
Don't impede yourself in the corner.
So, the 9, let's shoot for the 19th for an open house.
Or 16th.
Yeah, I keep saying 19th. The second meeting in September, which is the 16th, prior to the regular meeting, so do we say 5:30? If it's an open house, it can be 5:30 to 7? Do you want to start earlier?
Madam Mayor, I think we started at 5:30 the last time, given given the very high-level estimate, and really no design to speak of, to discuss with the residents, I would envision it to be more of a either yes, they agree with the project, no, they don't, yes, they agree with the assessment policy, no, they don't.
Okay.
My opinion would be 5:30 would be a starting time.
5:30, okay.
We could probably have it in this room.
I would say we should have it here, so we don't have that back and forth, since we have a 7 o'clock meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll work out the details, but for the council's digestion, we're generally some sort of meet and greet for 10, 15 minutes, and then we generally insisted on a PowerPoint presentation just to give everybody a starting point, and then there's a discussion afterwards.
Sure.
Just the freewheeling discussion, we found out the hard way doesn't really work all that long. They work better with a presentation, and then they got questions. You're still looking at it.
Okay, so 5:30, the 19th, open house, that format, and then.
16.
Yeah, it's Monday, September 16.
I got 19 stuck in my head, okay. The second meeting in September, second council meeting. All right, all right. Anything else on roads then that we need to?
So on the list of Mill and Overlay candidates, moving on to that, thank you for putting this together. Do we need to, if we're going to move on this, do we need to do borings on these, or are we comfortable with this type of work, because I know some of these are just overlays? Some, so, I'm just trying to think of the next, if we decide we want to move forward, again, if we're going to do borings, some of these might fall off the list, and just kind of thinking what we need to get going here on these.
I don't know if Gary can elaborate on this, my first take is some of this is is just simply to provide some additional strength until we can get in there with either a full overlay project or a reclaim, simply to get some additional strength and bridge us to a time when we can get in there with a project. Some of the streets also included in here are paved returns on a gravel surface, so that would be, you know, based on the public works, observation of the condition of that gravel road, certainly.
Can I just ask a question, it says edge mill, what is edge mill? I know what a Mill and Overlay is, but what is edge mill?
Well, it would not be a complete milling of the entire road, it would just be the first six feet of the edge of the road, and a lot of these areas would be probably around driveway areas where we would need it, because you still want to keep that strength, and Ms. Woski is right, these are just strictly, I call them a patch candidate, because basically what we're trying to do is just extend these lives of the road to try to get them through, you know, five to 10 years out, you know, so we can concentrate on other stuff. You know, these are smaller sections that are, you know, in need of work, but we're trying to hopefully get by.
So these are not traditional Mill and Overlays, these are all just type of overlays?
Correct, they're just kind of a patch, some of them will be, the Bertram Preserve, Squire, Chateau, which is a little further down the list, because they're in good shape, but it's something to watch, that we should be looking at doing a Mill and Overlay, a partial Mill and Overlay, just to keep them in the great shape they are, you know, before they deteriorate any, any worse than.
So what I'm hearing then is you probably don't have to do core borings.
Not on these, not until you're ready to, you know, to do a reconstruct or, you know, a reclamation project, but I think for most of these candidates, they're, you know, just to get us by, and I think we'll be surprised, and we do have Wildwood is actually getting paid with the project, Tata Finance Director Grimm, and we are going to take that actually out of the general fund for the street's budget to pay for that, so we went with an inch and a half overlay, so it'd be a great test area to see how this holds up, because that road is in desperate need, was a short stretch, they were right there across the street. It's going to be, you know, they kind of put it at 11,000, you know, a little over 11,000 for an inch and a half for a bid price. We narrowed it up a little bit, we widened it a little bit here and there, so it'll be right in that range, where it's going to be a great candidate to try this and see how it holds up. And I know that Mr. Guston said that, you know, one inch, but talking with the paving contractors who do this for a living, they weren't comfortable to do an inch on some of these roads because of the lay of the road, so some of these areas are actually going to have two and a half, two inch, up to three inch to fill the voids.
Right.
You know, but if you do it at one inch, you have some areas where you're going to actually have drag, where you're going to see the, because it's half inch in rock, so you're going to actually see some of it pulling through and leaving grooves and stuff like that, and we don't want that. You know, if we're going to strengthen up the road, we want to keep it as thick as possible, that's why the inch and a half, I think, is going to be recommended on most of these.
So by doing these, you're thinking five years?
I'm hoping five, 10, you know, push it out as long as we can, seven to 10, 10 to 12, I mean, I'm hoping to get 15 years out of something. You know, like the Bertrums, the preserves, the squires, those are in really good shape, when we do those, that'll be another, you know, hopefully 10, 15 years down the road. Even some of like, I just kind of drove through again the Painter's Road, Painter Creek area, along with Scott and Susan areas. Once I think you get that crowding back in the road, get the water to shed off, especially like on Scott Drive, we have already done the catch basins down the street, we've actually redone them all on Scott and Susan, so they're prepped, get the water to flow to where it's supposed to, get it off the road. I mean, I'm hoping to get, you know, 10, 15 years out of some of these roads, once you get it back to shape, and your settlement's already done in a lot of these areas, you're not going to have any new construction coming in and out of it. So I mean, I think, you know, for longevity, I'm hoping 10 to 15 years.
So, so did you say that we're already doing Wildwood?
Wildwood is going to be a test subject, just because it was so close to areas, it's right across the street from Hunter's Crest, and they're right there, at Hunter's Court and Pheasant Crossing, right there, so we just asked, what can, I mean, the estimate was 22.6 for the engineering estimate, but since they are so close, and it's right there, they're hardly charging us any MOP charges, anything like that, it's just strictly a, you know, since it's just a straight overlay, it's easy for them to do, they're right there, so.
I was just going to ask why, why it was half?
Just because of the ease of the project, and they're right there.
And they're right there, the mobility.
Yeah, I mean, they're literally right across the street.
Do they have to put down anything to make the new surface adhere to the old surface?
Yes, they'll put a tack oil course down, which is basically the glue between the two, so, and that's in their bid. They will be milling at the overlay, or at the county law, or at the, they actually are easement to our area where we match up with MinDOT. It's easement, and then at the, at the city borders, so do an easement there, we've got everything marked out. I think they called for a 24-foot wide area all the way through there, but most of it's 22 feet, because it is kind of narrow, and it does widen out, so the numbers will be slightly adjusted at the end to see what we come up with a total pavement cost, but I mean, it's a great area to try, and the other big area that I think, you know, should really look at next, and I have that on, is the County Road 110 extension, the west one that goes up to the park up there, up to the Three Rivers Park entrance for.
Gail Woods. Gail Woods.
Gail Woods, thank you, park, you know, because that one wasn't even evaluated, I don't think, I think when WBSP was out, I think they thought that was all dedicated to the park, but we do have one resident there, and we do own up to the gates. It's, you know, 660 feet approximately that we would need to do, but that would be another great candidate for that, to try to get the longevity out of there, because we have so many people going in and out of that park, you know, and it's, you know, it's in terrible shape right now, we did patch it heavily to get through, but I think to put an inch and a half over that, and, you know, next year, two years for whatever we do, you know, that'll just help immensely there.
Okay. All right. So, the amount of ones that we can do will depend on the final budget?
Correct.
So.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll be talking about that, but you've, I like the fact that you listed them in order of priority, so that's, that's good. All right. Good.
Madam Mayor, one other item is included in the packet is an agenda from a meeting that myself, Administrator Baroni, and Superintendent Peters attended with Hennepin County regarding proposed projects for 2020 to 2021. We had some really good discussion with the county with regards to their plans and ensuring that we were coordinating with some of the utility work. They'd been in contact with Superintendent Peters previously with regards to some, specifically some water main work over on West Branch Road, so we had a discussion and just thought that council should know what's coming up in the, from the county's perspective as far as street projects.
The idea being that if they knew what we were doing, and we knew what they were doing, we could coordinate, so they don't put down a new patch of road, and then we plan on doing a road that feeds into that the next year and kind of bust up their new road, that kind of thing. But it also gave us an opportunity to find out what their plans are for all these roads in Minnistrum, which is great.
Yeah, these are a lot. The only thing I would say is, I really hope they don't do any work on 92. Um, the only thing I would say is I really hope they don't do any work on 92 until 44 is open.
I have that question.
Yeah. That would be a nightmare. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to know, and none of this will be on our, on our nickel, right? This is theirs.
It's their stuff, yeah.
Their stuff, okay. All right. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to staff reports. We have, um, Mr. Baroni.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor and Council, I just have a few items to discuss with you, um, or to let you know about. Uh, everybody probably received, or did, should have received an email from me last Tuesday about a resident who was upset about the first foot or two of her driveway being cut and repaved due to the curb work and the eventual, uh, work on the street. Um, she's, did say she was going to, um, contact council members, don't know if she did, that's why I sent the email to you all. But that's, our standard practice is to not pay for a, um, reseal coating of a driveway. I don't know how much money that would cost us around the city, even though seal coatings aren't all that expensive for residential driveways in the grand scheme of things. But I just wanted you to be aware of that. Um, tomorrow I have Police Advisory Commission, I know, uh, uh, Mayor Whalen will be there as will obviously, uh, Chief Falls. And then, as we were, we've been meeting kind of on a weekly basis, uh, between, uh, Mr. Grimm, Mr. Peters, and Ms. Fowsky and I, to kind of, uh, talk about all the road stuff that you saw tonight, but also kind of get tied up. And so, we'll probably be, uh, coming back to you relatively soon to talk about a few things, uh, that are still going on at Halsted. Uh, we're getting, you know, kind of down to the end of this thing. Uh, there's still a few residents out there that have some concerns about things, uh, whether it might be a seed mix thing, or concrete curbing, or, uh, the one thing I think we're pretty close to resolving is the, uh, Sabaski property with the seed versus sod. Um, I think we've got him to agree to try the seed one more time, so, um, that's, I think, why you don't see people here tonight. But, you know, so we have a few things that left on our, our to-do list that we will have to, to deal with, and you'll be hearing about those as I, as we bring them back and try to finish up that whole project, so just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you. Other staff?
Uh, yeah, quickly, Madam Mayor and Council, I did at the end of your packet put, um, a, a notice that you were all emailed a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to provide some quick clarification on, on that. Um, so there was a dealer's license requested by a resident. Um, this resident's looking to, to lease or sell more than five vehicles in a 12-month period. Um, a dealer's license through the state does require zoning approval from the city. So, looking at our ordinances, the, the best way to process that was a special home occupation, the administrative permit process, um, that of which you saw the notice. What we do is we send a notice out to all property owners within 500 feet. If there are no objections made in that 10-day notice period, staff just administratively goes ahead and issues, um, that permit. It was our intent all along, we were certainly going to notify council of this request, but we were going to wait for that 10-day period to end, because if an objection was raised, you would have ended up making the decision anyway. It would have been kicked to the Planning Commission and ultimately you as City Council. So, it was our intent all along to let you know about it tonight at this meeting, because this was the next meeting closest to the 10-day period, uh, being up. We did not receive any objections to the request. There was actually one, uh, written, uh, email in support of, of the, of the request. Um, we do obviously understand the sensitivity to running a business on a residential property. Outside storage has been a, a topic of discussion. In this case, there will not be any outside storage, as you saw. It will all be in, inside storage and inside the building. Um, the permit card will be issued tomorrow. It has the conditions that, that was part of your, your packets. We still have not officially issued the permit yet, but we will be doing so tomorrow. Um, so just, just wanted to bring you up to speed on that, that we will go ahead, and then they'll have to go work through the state on, on getting their actual dealer's license. But, um, that's why, um, the, the notice was requested, and that's why we sent it to you, and we were going to tell you about it all along. So just FYI, that's what's going on there. That's section right out of City Code regarding the, this, the home occupation, uh, permit process. So, if there's, aren't any other questions, we're, we're going to go ahead and issue that permit tomorrow.
Any questions? I like the inside storage, because we've had issues, especially out in that area with.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I have a report as well. I just wanted to, um, bring you up to date on an issue that was brought to us by a resident in the Waterset Way Northview area, Mr. Jim Reinhold. So if you recall back in June, MediaCom and a couple of other providers came and spoke to us regarding broadband and, and providing services in general. Um, at that point, he had made the city aware that he felt that once an additional home was built in that area, that MediaCom years back had promised him services. So since that point, I've been in contact with MediaCom multiple times a week, um, and Jim has consistently been in contact with me regarding his concerns as well. So, with that being said, um, I have been pushing MediaCom for a couple of months now to address his concern. Most recently, that had been put in someone's queue to deal with, and that had not happened. And so if you recall, when Media, MediaCom came and spoke with us, there was a gentleman named Zach who, um, lived in the area. He actually has now taken that project over, uh, because we weren't getting any sort of resolution. As of last week, he and a director of engineering actually did a drive-through of the area to look at where the plant was, the extension, and where Mr. Reinhold's home is, as well as the new home that was built. Um, that gentleman owner also reached out to me to let me know that he was interested in what the results of that were as well. So as of the end of last week, after that drive-through happened, we're waiting, or they are waiting on a report internally then from MediaCom, and then Zach is going to reach out to Mr. Reinhold's directly and meet with him to go over what the results of that were. Second to that, um, he had, Mr. Reinhold's had expressed concerns regarding the contract and some of the contents of the contract that we have with MediaCom. Um, I offered to meet with Mr. Reinhold a couple of times. Both times he said he was not interested in meeting until he heard the results of this, um, of his original inquiry. In the meantime, based on what I understood his concerns to be, I worked with Mr. Beatty, um, and Kennedy and Gravie, another, um, attorney with Kennedy and Graven, is taking a look at the contract to look to see if there are any of his concerns regarding the contract being followed through on or being met. Mr. Beatty did make me aware, as we were in our first work session, um, that I have received an email from him with some information and next steps for us to pursue, so we can see whether or not MediaCom is indeed holding up their end of the bargain when it comes to our contract and serving residents. So that'll be the next step that I'll work on. So I just wanted to get you up to date as to where we were with that, from the point where he let us know in May, he had a concern in June when they came and spoke, and then just the chasing that I've been doing with MediaCom to try to get a resolution for him, whether the answer is yes or no, and then figuring out what his concerns might be in reference to our contract, and if there's something that the city can or should be doing to make sure that MediaCom is holding up all ends of their bargain, and whether they are meeting those expectations. So, after I'm able to review the information from the other attorney, and we take the next steps that are recommended there, I'll just keep you in the loop as to where we're at with that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other staff reports? So, um, quickly then, uh, let's see, um, I did attend the Parks Commission meeting, and, um, there were two items on the agenda. Just, uh, basically, uh, these were more, um, they, they talked about, um, taking park dedication funds versus, versus land, because one of the ones was out there in, um, the very rural area. Actually, both of them, I think, were. And then, uh, they also had some discussion on, uh, different parks that needed some updating and upgrading. And I did mention that we should be, um, applying for these grants through Hennepin County for our playground equipment, and they definitely agreed. We definitely need to do that. I think it's like September, October timeframe, but whatever that timeframe is, check on that. Um, because I think you can get up to like $25,000. So, and they said, yeah, that would be a really good thing to check on. So, that's basically it in a nutshell for the Park Commission. A public safety meeting is tomorrow, um, as Mr. Baroni stated. And then also, I was going to ask, um, coming up now in 2020 is the census. And I was just wondering if David, I know you're kind of the lead person on that, can we get a quick update next meeting? Kind of what we're doing, what we should be doing, how it works, kind of thing?
Sure.
Just kind of informational? That would be great.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have.
Uh, WCC did not have an August meeting. Uh, they are going to resume, uh, their meetings in September. Uh, and I am going to be, uh, going to the Planning Commission meeting next week.
Um, I attended the LMCD meeting last week. We had quite a bit of discussion regarding the illness outbreak on 4th of July, and, um, there is obviously no determined cause, but there's some speculation as to what it may have been. And we're looking at possible steps to take to enforce, to enhance, um, existing regulations regarding sewage discharge, so.
Yeah.
I attended the Pioneer Sarah Creek August meeting. Council agreed to send out letters of interest to five local engineering firms with the intent of, based on response, interviewing if necessary, and picking a vendor by our October meeting.
I had a quick question about LMCD. I was reading in the minutes that they're hiring a communications firm.
Yes.
For social media and just all of that.
Correct.
And, but, were you there for those discussions?
Uh, I was, we did take a vote on that, yes. Yes, that was, that passed at, that was the, uh, at the last meeting, yes.
Okay. I, I thought it was, they're, the rate that they're, they're paying $195 an hour.
There was a lot of discussion about that. And what the conclusion, what the response was on that particular question was that we are not buying, if you, if you look at it one way, you're saying, yes, we're buying X number of hours per cost arise at this conclusion of $195 an hour. However, they are required to provide a certain set of deliverables regardless of the amount of time spent. So it's likely that the number of hours will be higher than what's quoted, but the overall 25,000 is set. So that would make a per hour charge less. But it's really paying for the deliverables out of the report, or out of the request, I should say. So.
Okay.
So they're not, they're not being invoiced by the, the number of hours, it's the 25,000.
It's deliverables that are driving it.
It's the deliverables. And I think, I have to look at the notes, but I believe it's, they have to provide 90% of the deliverables before they get a certain amount of payment. So it's a very high level of deliverables they have to give before, not, I don't think it's full, but substantial payment, so.
But you were comfortable with how that worked?
Um, in terms of the contract, I was comfortable in terms of the mechanics of that, um, the overall need of it. Somewhat uncomfortable, but there's also been a lot of, um, the, the, obviously, it's been in the news a lot, and there's a lot of things that are out there that are probably not accurate. And given the small staff, there's a need to help the staff get proper communications out. And this ends up being a more economical way to do that versus.
And is it a, a one-time?
It's a one-time.
Payment, not every year, okay.
No, it's, it's a one-time, and, uh, and so, and that's, that's a further point that gave me some satisfac- satisfaction, is that it's a one-time.
Comfort, yeah.
Yeah. And so, uh, there's, there's a need for it, um, so that's why we moved forward with it.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing that I have is I have a meeting with Chief Weber tomorrow morning at the St. Bonnie Fire Department to, um, just talk about the things that were missed at the May meeting.
Okay. Okay. So with that, um, I think we are done with our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Um, Ms. Mortenson made the motion, Mr. Malater seconded it. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0.